And it's July 6, 2020, and I'm calling the Anacortes City Council meeting to order. Ms. Hunt, would you take the role?
Mr. Carter?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Walters?
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Here.
Ms. Moulton?
Here.
Mr. McDougal?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to give my COVID update. As of an hour ago, at Island Hospital, to date, we've tested 1,981 citizens. We've had 40 positive cases. This is in Anacortes. We've had nine inpatients. We've had 17 outpatients. And we've had 14 cases that went through the emergency department. In Skagit County, as of yesterday, we've had 552 cases and 15 deaths. We've had 59 people hospitalized and 434 people have recovered. But, you know, the governor's saying where you can't move to the next phase to your 20, you know, under 25,000, 100,000. Today, we stand at 54.2 cases per 100,000. So we're not moving to the next phase anytime soon. In the state of Washington, as of today, or yesterday, we have 35,000 confirmed cases, almost 36,000, hospitalized 4,500, deaths, almost 1,400 deaths. The percentage of deaths to cases is 3.8%. The total tests in the state of Washington, 612,706. And the percentage of positive cases out of that is 5.9%. In the United States, we've had nearly 2.9 million cases and 130,000 deaths. And globally, we've had 11.3 million cases and 532,000 deaths. So that's my report on the actual numbers. Of course, you know that the governor put in the order requiring masks. And so we had some questions today from a citizen, and I work with Darcy, and I'm going to read a response that we think kind of covers how we're handling masks in Anacortes. Thank you for reaching out and for your commitment to safety protocols to protect our community from COVID-19. The city of Anacortes fully supports the recommendations and the requirements from the Governor Inslee and the Washington State Health Secretary John Wiseman requiring masks be worn by all Washingtonians while in public. We also have followed the guidance from the Governor Inslee that the city's efforts should be aimed at educating our community on the benefits of masks in fighting in this pandemic. As you can imagine, the city has relatively a small police force, I mean, that's a court system, which will require our dedicated professionals to make judgments about where to spend their resources and what to focus on to best protect our community. With the recent events nationally and locally, the police were primarily focused on, you know, on overall public safety. We believe strongly that our leaders, we are blessed to lead our community by demonstrating a willingness to listen to a variety of viewpoints, but we also will just educate wearing masks. We continue to remind our residents that face masks are required whenever they're out in public. Not only are masks required, they are the right thing to do to protect your neighbor. We will continue to prioritize this message and will carry out the law to the highest standards possible. We appreciate the opportunity to engage with our citizens during these challenging times. So basically, we want to follow the governor's suggestion of education. Of course, this is something for the council and the policy if you want to have another recommendation, but at this time, we don't think it's proper for us to start ticketing for masks. The other thing that was brought up, and I, that is not really COVID, but since it's my time to talk, it's Saturday, we had, which was July 4th, we had a group of citizens that had a patriotic protest, and they walked from Third Street to 12th Street. And there were some very concerned citizens about that protest. I want to read a little about what my thoughts are on that, and I'd love to open that up for the council discussion on that. We recently, we had inquiries from citizens expressing concerns about the participants in the recent demonstrating carrying, and they were carrying firearms. That's where most of this came from. The city is committed to protecting constitutional rights of all citizens and ensuring those rights can be safely exercised. Our primary duty as representatives of our community is to protect the public health and safety, which is always the compass we use in making important leadership decisions. Washington is an open carry state, meaning Washington state law affords citizens the right to openly carry firearms. Residents are required to have concealed weapons, licensed to carry concealed weapons, and there are limitations where weapons can be carried. They cannot be brought into a jail, a court, mental health facility, schools, airports, bars, restaurants are off limits to individuals under the age of 21. However, combined with individual First Amendment protections of the rights of free speech and expression, the city has little ability to prohibit the carrying of firearms at a demonstration. The city can and will step in through law enforcement for those freedoms that are used to threaten or harm anyone. Our highly trained skilled police force will carefully monitor any future situation to ensure lawful expressions of constitutional rights do not cause to line in opposing a threat to others. The city is a rich community woven together of people with a variety of backgrounds and beliefs. It is diversity that makes us strong and able to adapt to new challenges and changes together. So I ask each and every resident to remember that we must honor each other's differences as we speak out during these uncertain times. We can express our beliefs without the need for hate, violence, and threats. And those are just words that Darcy and I put together today. I have not sent those out, but I thought it would be a good starting point for a discussion this evening, based on, I know you all got emails about 4th of July. So that concludes my report to the council tonight. Are there any comments? Okay, well then we'll move on. We'll move on to...
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Councilman Young.
I want to make sure I'm understanding if this is the appropriate place to make comment to what you just said about the marches, or there was another place in the agenda you would like those remarks to be held for?
We could do it at the end of the agenda or at this time. There's no place on the agenda because the agenda was written before this came up.
Right, okay.
What would you like to do?
I'll just go ahead right now, just simply because you brought it up and the discussion is going forward. I've received personally a lot of phone calls and a lot of emails about the march, and also that there were protesters there, and I think you dubbed those patriotic protests that went on. I wanted to commend the local organizers of the BLM protest in particular, simply because they were youth, they were organizing, they were peaceful. This was probably their fourth or fifth march. What they learned in this example is to stand for justice, what they believe to be equality for all, and to keep chiming and bringing that message forward. I really personally wanted to thank them, in particular Will McCracken, Kate Clark, Evan, Juliet, and so many others who stood out and probably for the first time in their lives, heard the vitriol that also comes sometimes in racism and discussions of race and/or a difference of opinion. I'm not condemning the other people who were there because they do have a right to protest, but I am commending in particular our youth for standing, the beauty of our town for the people that are coming out to stand for unity and justice for all. I think that, like you said, the challenge was in the hate speech that was coming out or deemed hate speech, and then at the same time, the brandishing of the weapons. So sometimes those two things, when you have youth that are there, that are seeing for the first time that level of angst is a difficult thing. But I wanted to commend them for standing peacefully, for bringing forward the truth about life, and also for pushing our city forward. I thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Yeah, dear.
Yes.
I want to thank Mr. Young for his comments, but I do want to try to stay away from the words like "brandishing" because with "brandishing" also comes with intent. And having a weapon just out in the open does not constitute "brandishing" by just merely having it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carter.
If you won't mind, Mayor Gear.
Mr. Young.
Yes, the reason I use that word, because from what I understand, it was posted on many Facebook accounts the intent to bring weapons. So in that case, and the encouragement to bring weapons, from what I understand, so from that case, it does mean "brandishing" because it was an intent to bring weapons to a march. That was why I used it, but I totally respect exactly what you're saying, Mr. Carter. I do understand that, and thank you. Mayor Gear?
Mr. Miller?
Well, since I didn't think we were going to comment every week, since apparently there are protests, marches every week.
Every week.
I'm not a protest or a parade guy or an activist kind of guy. I tend to serve my country and my community by doing things. But hey, you know, good on you for practicing your First Amendment rights, although I remember having a conversation with council a couple of years ago when we were having the oil refinery protests and trying to educate, you know, First Amendment, civil disobedience, they're different things. No one actually has a First Amendment right to go into the street without a permit, just so you know. But look, I get it, but it's just interesting, the "brandishing", again, I'm not into any of that stuff, but you know, the symbolism of the First Amendment protected by the Second Amendment is a fairly common theme. But again, you know, traffic laws, we had some of the email discussions we had, I have to commend our police department because they're very, very good about sticking to not picking sides. And Mr. Young, I appreciate your comments, but again, you have to be inclusive to understanding that there are other ideas. I know it's challenging in Anacortes when, I don't know, maybe 6,000 people voted for a losing national candidate and 4,000 people voted for a winning, you know? So there's some tension there when you bring, which is why I never like to talk national political issues when we have so much great city business to do. So those are just my two cents on inclusivity and protesting in Anacortes, which seems to be an exciting thing to do that we have every week now. But since I do, thank you, Mayor, for giving me the microphone. I don't know if anything went to Coslin Park, but I did have some constituents concerned about, I know there was some damage at Coslin Park, and you made a commitment to eventually bring those veteran plaques back, so...
And then the damage was done by a lawnmower.
Yeah, right.
And we are committed to, we're working on that repair as we...
Thank you for saying that because I had a number of constituents, because I think some of the 4th of July wanted to end up at Coslin Park and...
Yes, we do.
So thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Ms. Moulton?
Thank you, Mayor Gear. I would like to thank the members of our community who are standing up for equality. The Black Lives Matter movement is a movement with very deep roots in the civil rights movement of the 1960s, and it is a movement for equality amongst all of us, which is a basic tenet and foundational principle of our country. And as a country, we have some woeful lapses, too many to mention, in that pursuit, but that's humanity. And with some help and guidance from our young people, we are learning again what it means to stand up and how to stand up peacefully and honorably in support of what is right and equality, which is one of the foundational principles of the United States of America. So I want to thank everyone who participated and continues to participate in these demonstrations and the spirit in which they do that, to be inclusive of all of us. With respect for everyone and different points of view. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anything else? Carolyn, I mean Christine?
Yeah, so, you know, I was giving this some thought, and I prepared a few remarks, and I was going to try to nitpick and pull out a couple items, but now it's probably just best if I read kind of what my thoughts were after talking to a few people who were at the march, and also seeing some of our constituents send us emails over the last few days. So it was brought to council's attention that this last weekend there was a confrontation between various community members. Images and personal narratives have been shared. Apparent inflammatory rhetoric, language, and physical intimidation was used. And I just want us to know that our students, our neighbors, and our babies are watching this behavior. And as elected officials and community members, we have a duty to condemn it. Verbal and physical intimidation is never okay. The offensive actions of a few do not represent our great city. So I think we all need to move forward on our path with respect, compassion, and inclusion, understanding that we're all in this together. So that's all I wanted to end the note on.
Thank you very much. That was really well done. Any other comments tonight? Okay, we'll move on then. And actually, there are no other committee reports at this time. Mr. Hoagland is out sick for finance, and library and fiber and public works committees were canceled. So we're going to move to the... Yes, Mr. Walters?
Actually...
Am I incorrect?
Multiple staff reminded us that we do have a finance committee report. I got the impression that they were really eager for us to provide a finance committee report.
Oh, okay.
The finance committee met, I guess it was two weeks ago because we didn't meet last week.
Okay.
On June 24th. We talked first of all about a proposal from the Parks Department to contract with the local waterfront alliance for the sailing program. This was something that the staff had started work on well before COVID, and it's an agreement that hasn't yet been executed. Our recommendation was that they make a couple tweaks to accommodate the fact that we are now dealing with COVID, but bring it forward to council to make a decision on whether we want to go in that direction. And I think our recommendation is that we do. So I assume that we'll be seeing that on an agenda sometime soon. We also talked about sales tax revenues, and I think we generally feel like sales tax revenues were, although not good, not anywhere near as bad as we thought, and we're actually fairly pleased as a result, given that the last quarter was most of the lockdown period. So relatively good news there. We talked about the 1/10th, 1% affordable housing sales tax that goes into effect, well, that just went into effect, and what we're going to do with the interlocal agreement and funding contract for the two entities that are supposed to receive that sales tax revenue. And I think our suggestion was that we enter into those agreements, but set a start date sometime next year, if that works for those entities, so that they would have the commitment from the city for the stream of revenue, but that the stream of revenue would not begin yet. So our instruction to Mr. Hoagland was that he reach out to those entities and make that proposal, and see if that fit with their plans, or if not, if they had some alternative idea. And then we also heard from the fiber departments and heard their plans and their estimates for how well they're going to be able to weather the COVID and move into the next phase of expanding the network throughout town. And we'll be hearing a finance report from the fiber department as an entire council here in the next couple of weeks. But I think our suggestion from the finance committee was that will work most well if they can reduce their expenses and if they can speed up the rate of installation. We are, we're doing installations now, and we're moving right along. But if we can do installations faster, we can have revenue sooner. And so our suggestion was that we figure out how to do that as quickly as possible. I think that's all we have for the finance committee.
Okay, thank you. Any other comment on that? All right, we're going to move to the consent agenda, but item 3D, we're going to move to other business. We'll make item 3D, we'll move it down to 4B. And with that, I ask your preference on 3A, B, C, and E.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Miller?
I move that we approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, and E.
Motion by Mr. Miller, and second by Mr. Walters. Is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. So we'll move on now to item 4A, which is Resolution 2094, a guide for expanding restaurant and retail space in the central business district. This is a discussion item with possible action this evening. And Mr. Meesmer, are you with us?
I am, Mayor, thank you. And members of the council, good evening. So first, let me say that I amended the agenda bill for this resolution earlier in the day and sent that out to council to clarify the planning committee's recommendation for closing commercial down. And we'll get to that as we move further through my presentation. But essentially, for the purposes of economic recovery as a result of COVID-19 emergency, Resolution 2094 proposes guidelines for restaurant and retail use of the sidewalks and street right of ways adjacent to the businesses. And in some cases, if two businesses want to get together and coordinate, that would be allowed in those guidelines as well. The expanding the sidewalk use permits to allow use for retail purposes on a sidewalk, it's not something new. Some of our businesses have done it in the past, but we're now encouraging retail businesses to think more about that, what it looks like, and making sure that they have, of course, a proper hold harmless agreement and insurance that would coincide with that. The restaurants, as council recalls, the city's purchasing 10 more parklets. Those parklets should be arriving early August, is what I'm told. We'll have those out in front of the restaurants in a parking space. And so these guidelines will help the restaurateurs understand what their responsibilities are. For instance, taking care of their own furniture, purchasing their own furniture, planters, sanitizing where needed, and keeping them clean. And then the hours of operation on those would be from their opening until 10 o'clock. And then in the off hours, they could be used by the public, is the intent on the parklets with us. And so business owners serving food and alcohol will need to work with the Liquor and Cannabis Control Board to revise their liquor license, and the Skagit County Health Department for their food licenses as well. But if you could imagine looking down Commercial Avenue during a closure period of perhaps Friday afternoon from 5:00 until through 10:00 on Saturday, and seeing people in the street, tables, chairs in the street, and retail goods in the street, and people enjoying themselves on a nice sunny day like today. That's the intent on all this. And again, for the temporary use of the sidewalks, we would have to have a proof of insurance, which all the restaurants and businesses already have insurance, they just have to get us proof of it. And then a hold harmless agreement, which is very simple, we already have a form that we use for that. So staff is also proposing to waive the $37.50 sidewalk use permit fee. And typically, you would look at like a right of way permit fee for the use of the right of way for the parklets, and we would recommend waiving that as well. We have, as of this morning, received word from the governor's office that opening up the streets as we propose is a go. And in fact, they've said that if the businesses feel they can meet the safety guidelines during Phase 2, they could go ahead and start doing that. Although I think, in my opinion, Phase 3 would be a better approach because obviously, once we do open, we're going to get quite a few people. And so I think I would feel more comfortable with Phase 3, but for the council's discussion. So in regards to the street closure, there have been a couple of thoughts, and I know the council received a couple of emails, and I forwarded one, but we've got one from Pelican Bay Books, very enthusiastic about it, and from Watermark Book, also very enthusiastic. And then Elizabeth Freeland with Elizabeth Cottage, concerned about what it might do to their retail customers and, you know, trying to get to their store. So one of the, you know, one of the things that we felt very strongly about was, as we close commercial now, we're going to be putting barricades on each of the streets and then cones in the alleys to keep people from driving out into commercial. On the side streets, I'd propose making some signs that would, we would put in a parking spot right on the corner by commercial on the side street that would say, "Reserved for pickup and takeout." And we'd have two of those on each side street by commercial. Found a very good deal on those, only $50 apiece, so that's pretty good. So I think really what, you know, what council may want to think about is, you know, the closure itself. In the past, we've closed a street down for open streets during the day. We've also closed it down for the evening hours where restaurants can move out into the street. And so this could be a baby step thing where we do a couple of night closures and then do a Saturday, and then see how it goes. Or if council would like, we could, you know, start in Phase 3, pick a weekend and say, okay, we're going to start in Phase 3, and do a Friday night from 5:00 until 10:00 Saturday and give it a good shot and see how it goes.
So Mr. Meesmer, can I comment? I verbally heard from three businesses, and they're curious, but they're fearful. And so my concern is that we give them a chance to kind of wrap their head around this because, you know, we're coming out of COVID-19, and now we're blocking the street, and then if you have an elderly, you know, customer, how are they going to get to them? And so I'm all for it. I'm pro doing this. It's not that, but I felt like we needed to have that mentioned. It was one jewelry store, an art gallery, and a clothing store that have all talked to me, and they're not, like, it's not a no, it's just like, how are my customers going to get to me? So I kind of like your approach for maybe an experimental thing to see how it goes, and then we blow it open, you know, Phase 3. I don't know. It's just something to put on the table, and I'll be quiet now.
Mayor Gear?
Yes.
Yeah, I've always been supportive of at least doing, at least trying this. I think we've talked about it a couple of times to...
Oh, yeah.
At least pre-COVID, you know, just to try it to see. My couple of concerns I have, and I've also heard from a couple of retailers with the same concerns that you mentioned, so I appreciate that. And I know Mr. Meesmer is working hard to try to figure out ways to get some of those types of customers that don't have the mobility to be able to walk in to pick up an item. But the two things I wrote down, it didn't have a time in the, it just had, but maybe you've updated it, I have the old one, I apologize, but as far as the effectiveness, just said Saturday or Friday and Saturday, but didn't have the times in there. I think those times would be, that's a reasonable start because that's kind of at the end of many of the non-restaurant retail timeframe, but that could be adjusted. And then, well, pre-COVID, I was always thinking that the best, one of the tools we have in our toolbox is the auxiliary, the police auxiliary patrol. However, I know they're not currently... However, I know they're not currently active, so just a couple of things that I was thinking about as we try to implement it. And certainly, I, I think, yes, maybe try it at a couple of weekends, I don't know, phase two, phase three. I, I, I don't really have an opinion on that one, but I, but I, I do have a strong opinion that I'd like to at least try it one, one weekend or one weekend night in the next couple of weeks to see how it works out. And, and then, then you'll get the real feedback and.
Well, yeah, and then maybe, you know, hopefully we'll go well, as well as we think it will, and a lot of the fear factor will go away. People have just been hit with a lot lately.
Yep.
Um, Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Mayor here. Oh, Dawn, do you wanna go first? I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Malden. I just wanted to mention, uh, uh, in regards to the auxiliary patrol, um, I've had quite a few volunteers pop up, uh, on my email screen here. And, and so that's, um, that's our main method of getting the barricades out and the cones out, and then getting them put back up, is with volunteers. So yes, we'll be looking for more volunteers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Could the chamber board help? Just a thought. Carolyn, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, as to volunteers, um, there are quite a few in the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee that are stepping up and excited to participate in that way. Um, I wanted to mention, if we did, not to get too deep into logistics right now, but if we did two separate nights, that would mean four phalanxes of volunteers to put it up, take it down, put it up, and take it down. If, instead of, if we did it from Friday night through Saturday night. I definitely appreciate the concerns of the merchants that have been mentioned. I think that having a drop-off and pickup area on each side street, on every single one, could be helpful. And in some instances, people will be dropped off closer to their destination than they might ordinarily be if they're, if it's a normal parking situation. So I think there's a lot of flexibility there that could be very helpful. I think we will need a really good advertising campaign. We want people to come, and we want local people to come. Again, this is, there's a concern sometimes that this, open streets is like a festival, bringing people from out of town. This is a way to engage our residents in their downtown core that might not ordinarily come downtown because it's filled with tourists. So we have, we're not gonna have the tourists this season, obviously. So let's bring our people down. At the beginning of the pandemic, when the streets were dead, I have never seen so many people walking in on bicycles of all ages and down to Santa Clarita. And there was huge support and excitement for that. So what I'm hoping is that we can build on that and bring these families and people of all ages down and engage them with their local businesses, let, support our local businesses. So how do we, we'll have to work on how we get the word out and make this a community-wide thing.
Yeah. You know, Carolyn, on that note, there is some monies available through Dawn's department that maybe we could work with the chamber, and they could help us with that. They're looking for an opportunity to do some marketing.
That would be.
You know, Dawn and I talked this morning, and we were, I was wrestling with a marketing campaign because I thought, we don't wanna invite people from other places to come here during this time. But if we had a campaign, like you say, for our residents, that's quite a different, you know.
Right, could we do a postcard mailing, could we do it on the cover of the clam digger? Could we do, I mean, just different, this could all be talked about. But I think we could really do a good campaign. And the, uh, the last thing I'd like to mention right now is that we're safer outside. So if we're already open in phase two for people to come into our businesses, we should be able to social distance and get more business outside for those of us who are uncomfortable going into a small store to spend our money or. So I, I'm sort of leaning towards doing it in phase two. So those are my thoughts. Thank you for listening.
Mayor here.
Yes.
Um.
You're welcome.
I am fairly excited about this idea because I think it really has a lot of potential to help businesses during COVID. But also that it has a lot of potential to help reinvigorate our downtown after COVID.
Yeah.
But I think the details on this are gonna matter a lot, and we are going to have to be flexible. Um, we've ordered these parklets, that's good, get them coming, they take, there's some lead time. But I don't think we should wait till phase three, we may never get to phase three. You know, we don't know, we, there is so much that we do not know. We may determine that it is not safe to be inside at all, you know. We, we, we don't know where this is going at this point. Um, what we do seem to know is that it's pretty good to be outside. And, um, uh, I was just in Salem, Oregon, they have closed half of the street, um, and the entire half of the street, so not restricting people to parklets, put tables right in the street, um, and let traffic roll down the other side. Now, they got barricades, they got all kinds of stuff. There's lots of details that matter for how to make that work. I don't think we need a marketing campaign. Um, people show up in a normal year, people show up at the top of the majestic because they saw the sign hanging over the balcony that it's open, or they saw it on Facebook, that's it. There's no, no postcards, no marketing campaign. Re- our residents can find that, um, all by their, all by themselves. I do think what we need is a full-time employee to work on this issue. And I would propose that we pay for that person out of the CARES Act money that we receive. Um, limited time employment, but I, I don't think that we can do this right without being very adaptive, being on the street constantly, not relying on volunteers, um, to put out barricades. I mean, it's great if we can get people to help, but we have to have a plan in the absence of that as well. And I think that there's lots of potential options here, even beyond the parklets, which I think are a good idea, and I think will help. But I'm concerned that they won't be enough. Um, and I wonder what else we can do and how much time the council as a policymaking entity should be spending on this versus staff who can be on the ground figuring out all the details and adapting as quickly as, as they can.
Well, would they just seize your head nod, and they'll get to work?
Mayor here.
Not so late here tonight. Mayor, uh, Mr. Miller? No, Mr. McDougal.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Walters, I really appreciate what you just said. Um, I wanted to quickly ask, when we're talking about the open street piece and either like potentially an experiment where it's, say, five to ten on a Friday and a Saturday night, that decision and that timeline is not tied to the parklet's decision and timeline, correct? Like.
Right.
Like we could do, say, two weekends from now, we could open the street well before we've got the park, parklets in place.
Mm-huh.
Yes. Um, great, that's, that's what I was hoping. I think that the two efforts should be kind of coupled, you know, independent so we could, so we can run the experiments with, uh, open street sooner, essentially.
Mayor here.
Yes. Go ahead.
I'm also in favor of phase two, of just waiting to phase three. As, uh, uh, Mr. Walters said, you know, it may be in December, and people won't wanna be outside. So starting in phase two would be preferable.
Okay, so next steps, we give it to Dawn, and we run with it? What?
Yes, Mayor here.
Mr. Miller, go ahead.
So, I mean, I, I wouldn't, uh, phase two, I'm, I'm fine with as well. But I, I, I wouldn't be uncomfortable if you said, you know, hey, July seventeenth, Friday, um, we're gonna, we're gonna close the streets from five to, and I don't know if you need the authority, our, our authority, I mean, a head nod, of course, is nice that, you know, that we're all on board. But certainly for an experimental purpose, uh, for you to, to say, hey, I've got all these, all the ducks in a row, we're gonna block the street from five to ten on July seventeenth. Or, I don't know why I'm picking that date, but it's out there in the.
It's a week from Friday.
Okay.
We could come next Monday and say, you know, what our plan is, and if we got it, you could head nod, and we could.
And give it, give it a shot, and then, and then you'll get the real. And you'll get, get some real feedback, and then we can adjust what our, our written policy, maybe a little later if we wanna do that.
Right, right. Well, I really love your, um, enthusiasm. Miss Freeland?
Yeah, I, I appreciate, uh, Councilmember Miller said, "I think that we need to get it started sooner than later." I'm not inclined to wait until sometime in August when the parklets arrive to start this process. Um, so I say July seventeenth or phase three, or when the parklets come, whichever's first.
It'll be July seventeenth, it'll be twenty.
Probably. Um, so a couple other things, um, looking at the parklets, I just wanna pull out a couple of things for us as council members and possibly businesses to consider. Um, it does say in the, um, the outline that the parklets are for the business associated with it during regular business hours, and then it's open to the public, um, when those businesses are closed. I think that that's something that might need some finesse, just in case they've, you know, the businesses are expected to provide their own tables and chairs and whatnot. So I don't know how that's gonna work, but it's something that we should, we should be able to modify depending upon feedback we get. I also think, though, that we should encourage neighboring businesses that may have different, um, kind of rush hours to share those parklet spaces. Um, so if one is doing, you have a breakfast lunch, and the other's doing the dinner, that hopefully they can overlap and utilize that space. My concern is that if we, you know, it could become down that we can only stay at fifty percent capacity in these restaurants or businesses, even past phase three, just as, you know, research kind of comes to, comes to the forefront. So I also want that when we talk about, um, considering closing our streets down, that we may need to expand, we may need to have table service beyond the parklet spaces, and we should be thinking about that. Um, I, also that it may be, if we can get enough volunteers or man-hours, that we might wanna pull some of our tables and chairs from the depot, or possibly the port would be willing to share some of their tables, their event tables and chairs that aren't being used this summer, so that we can have places where, if those people wanna get to-go meals, but they still wanna stay down, in our downtown core to eat them, that they can be socially distanced during our closed streets. I, I, my initial inclination from my experience being on the arts festival board and hearing the frustrations of our business owners, business retailers and restaurants, that when we have those big festivals, it really cuts into their business because of the lack of parking and the focus on those temporary, um, vendors. This is gonna be a different situation, though, right? Where hopefully it's really focused on more local businesses and more walking. Um, we are not gonna have the hundred thousand people visiting our town over a three-day period. That's not what we want with this open streets. We just wanna get out and have our local people be able to support our local businesses. So my inclination is to really try to organize and see if we can make work that closed street from Friday at five through Sunday, or Saturday at ten. Um, both for retailers, so that we can pull those, um, Saturday market people. Once they've hit there, they can come and have lunch, or a brunch, or, or an early cocktail dinner drink, right? So that our, those tables can get turned over multiple times throughout the evening and throughout the day. Um, so I think there's a lot of stuff to kind of negotiate still. But, um, we, the more feedback we get from our business, our downtown businesses, the better. So if they're listening, please keep talking to us, um, because we wanna be able to be flexible because it's so important that they have as good of a, you know, July, August, September, before that winter time comes, because we wanna see all of them next spring. So that's really our focus, I think, with trying this new, uh, closed street.
Okay, thank you, that's wonderful. Mr. Young?
Uh, yes, thank you. I'm very much in support of, um, doing this trial. I think our businesses downtown need it, and so do we as consumers, as shoppers. I mean, we're looking for ways to, um, participate in our downtown and be more social, but also, uh, do social distancing. I, I think that the thing, one of the challenges that I don't want us to lose in sight of our exuberance for some form of opening to help our downtown and people have, um, venues to enjoy themselves, is that the, not losing the mask requirement or the mask encouragement, because one of the things that we're all watching on television in other cities happening is, in that exuberance of being out and about, in that exuberance that, um, in that exuberance of trying to work with, um, opening, we've gotta make sure that we're also still being cognizant of the social distancing requirement as well as masks. There are people in our city who believe, uh, that masks are not necessary, and they have their own beliefs, and that's okay. But how do we also, as a city, moving this forward, guard to make sure we're not losing sight, that it does help to, um, you know, keep us open? Because at some point, given the numbers, uh, if we don't trend downward, we won't ever really be able to open up. So you've gotta be careful with that. And so when we're working out those details, we gotta make sure we are able to encourage those people willing to come and participate to honor that such that we, as a city, can open. So that's my big concern.
Very good. Mr. Meesmer, and then Miss Freeland.
Uh, so I, I have been working with a local sign company, and they're, they're the ones that'll be doing the, um, A-Board signs for the reserved parking space. Um, my thought was to see what they could do for an A-Board sign that would talk about social distancing and wearing masks, and, you know, get maybe ten or fifteen of those spread out. Um, I noticed, uh, in Coopville, they put, uh, social distancing stickers on the sidewalk. Um, I don't know if we'll do, do that, but I think A-Boards is doable. Uh, they're about fifty to sixty dollars a piece, um, and we can use CARES money for that, uh, COVID- nineteen money.
We also have masks that you, you purchased, we can have mask stations. You know, if you're not seated, you need to be wearing a mask, you know. No mask beyond this point, we can really be proactive, and given the resources. I know that the restaurants have had to do that, we had to have the resources and say, "Here you go, you're welcome," but, you know, and people usually, if they're hungry enough, will put it on, so. Yeah, so there's some things we can do with that. Miss Freeland?
Yeah, I think, I think the mask thing of having some available in case people forget them, and just kind of more of an education attitude versus, um, anything else. Um, also having some hand sanitizer, if we're gonna have some outdoor seating with hand sanitizing wipes would be really important. Um, the other thing that came up with one of our ports liaison meetings was the fact that the port, um, restrooms we're getting, were being requested to be used because our restroom, city restroom, some of them had been closed. So we may need to look at, I don't know if we need some porta potties to accommodate that, or at least know that we, we need to have some bathrooms available that are getting cleaned regularly for the public. Um, because I don't know how businesses are gonna feel about providing those, um, right now. So, and I have seen, you know, I, I drove through Leavenworth this weekend, and they were actually, I saw people, um, repu- uh, restaurants handing out masks as they entered, and that was a pretty easy thing to do. And then also the stickers on, in the, um, in front of every business, um, on the ground, kind of doing it, to reminding people to maintain that six-foot distance. And a lot of them had the, which I've seen in our businesses that have been open, you know, the, the hand sanitizer with kind of a remind, soft reminder of social dis- distancing and best practices when in confined spaces. So I, you know, think that we're just gonna have to get used to that.
Yep, we are. Okay, anything else on this? Mr. Walters?
Mayor here. So, a couple of things. First of all, if Mr. Meesmer has any particular reason that we should wait till phase three, uh, I would like to hear it before we all just say, "Go ahead for phase two." I wanna hear that counter argument. Um, Mr. Meesmer, do you have, do you have anything on that now?
Uh, sure, I do.
No pressure.
So m- m- my thought on that was fifty or more, uh, gathering, a group gathering of fifty or more. Um, I mean, we're gonna get a lot of people downtown, probably, that's the hope. Um, social distancing, yes. Um, but I didn't, you know, kind of concerned about getting that gathering of more than fifty people, um, which could be.
Do, do we think that the gathering in individual street areas or parklets or individual outdoor restaurant seating areas then together constitute an illegal fifty-plus person gathering?
That's not what I'm hearing from, uh, the governor's office. That's not what I'm hearing from, uh, the governor's office, um...
Okay, so that's the only reason to not, um, go ahead during phase two?
No, I think we could go ahead to do that. There's, I, I did have one other thing though, um, staffing. You know, the, the more that we throw on this, um, volunteers aren't going to be able to do all this. Um, when we can, you know, we probably could use some help from Public Works setting this up and tearing it down. And, you know, if we're going to provide tables for the public to sit, you know, we're going to have to drag those over from the depot or wherever and... My initial thought for a trial run was, um, many of the restaurants want to do what they did at the, I believe it was the last open streets, maybe?
Mm-huh, mm-huh.
Where they brought all their tables out into the street and just, and, you know, just went for it from there.
I, I would recommend that for the first, this first couple of weeks, because the restaurants know what their capacity is and that would help with the phase two requirements too, that, and we've all put furniture away. So, we have an excess of furniture because we can't use it inside. So, I think rather than, then maybe phase three, we bring in, um, you know, extra tables and chairs from the depot and the port. But we'd have a little more control that way on numbers and, you know, people still are, you know, they can walk freely and bike freely. That's happening now, but I really, I, I really recommend that. And there's not a shortage of tables and chairs, so that will not be an issue.
So, um, yeah, well, that addresses one of my prior concerns, which is that I just do not believe that we can do this with, um, the planning director and his merry band of volunteers. I think we're, we're going to need to dedicate existing city staff and additional staff. We received five hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars from the Department of Commerce, uh, for response to the public health emergency. Seems to me that this qualifies. We approved that in our local agreement, accepting that money without any description from staff as to what they plan to do with it. Uh, I, I think that this would be a logical use of that money.
It would be. I agree. And I'll work with Mr. Meesmer in the morning. We'll brainstorm on who we could hire.
So, so the... To wrap back...
Mr. Miller and then Mr. Meesmer.
Thank you, Mayor.
We're done, Mr. Walters.
Go ahead.
Finish up.
So, to, to finish up though, my sense is that the resolution in front of us, I think in line with what some other council members have said, is maybe a little too restrictive. Um, I would like to get this going, but I, I tend to think that the resolution in front of us is more prescriptive than I would like, uh, with particular times, those kinds of things. Also, I do not think that, uh, restaurants who provide seating in the parklets should have to, uh, make that available to other, um, non-customers after their business hours. I think that that will impede adoption and I would, I would like that to not be the rule. So, I guess I propose that in line with what Mr. Miller said, um, that we authorize the mayor to close the street, maybe even just by motion, and, uh, set in motion the process of getting all this ready, but bring back a more flexible resolution next week that provides more authority to the mayor and the planning director to implement these things as, in response to changing circumstances.
Sure, I like that. Do you like, is that okay, John?
Yes, Mayor. Um, and I was going to say, um, for the seventeenth and the eighteenth, um, if council is so inclined to look at closing down Commercial Avenue, five P.M. on Friday through ten P.M. on Saturday as a trial run.
Hi.
Mayor here.
Mr. Miller.
That, that was the entire time, right? Not, I, I was thinking these are one, I, I was kind of leaning towards just one, one weekend night. Uh, you, you write it all, you write it down. Before we go hiring an F.T.E., let's find out how much staff it really takes. Sure, pay overtime to whatever we have to do to do the, do the test run and then get the feedback from the businesses. But my, my two points are, one, write, write all the stuff down when you do one event. Uh, I'm concerned, I thought I just heard Mr. Meesmer say, from Friday at five P.M. till Saturday at ten, at ten P.M. As opposed to the break in the middle, right? I thought there was a break in the middle there.
There's that option.
Okay, uh, that, that's why I like, I, I like the, I, but again, I, I, you know, I'm comfortable letting the mayor and the staff go ahead and, and run with either way.
We can come back.
It's just my suggestion is, my suggestion is you, you, you do it one time, you write it down, you figure out how much staff time it, it took and, uh, and then how much pushback you got, um, from, from parking issues. And then, and then we, and then we tweak that and provide a written, written guidance for you later.
Okay. What we can work on and bring it back to next Monday. Mr. Young?
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, chime in with Mr. Miller, um, and the sentiments. I think it's, what I'm hoping we hear a little bit more about, um, when you come back to us, is the thoughts about five P.M. to ten P.M. and then on Friday and then Saturday from five P.M. to ten P.M. What I'm looking at is the recognition of the letters that came in, um, of some businesses that were concerned about their traffic that normally arrives, you know, doing their working hours. And if they're working on Saturday, the question is what impact that would have it? And if the overarching good of bringing people downtown, it's better to just close it from five P.M. Friday all the way through ten P.M. on Saturday. I'd like to hear a little bit about that when you come back and then tell us what your thoughts are.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Meesmer?
Um, I'm, I'm unclear on how the council would like to proceed for the seventeenth and the eighteenth.
They want us to come back with a plan. You and I have to come up with a plan on how we're going to do it.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Walters?
I don't think there's time to come up with a plan and come back, because there's only two weeks from now.
Well, we're going to come back on Monday to tell you what we're doing.
Uh, yeah, but can we decide here? I mean, I would propose that we decide here to do something on the seventeenth.
Absolutely, I agree.
And, and I, I tend to support Mr. Meesmer's proposal to start at five and end at ten the following day, um, without a break in the middle, simply because you've got to put all the barricades out and you've got to list all the times and you've got to do all the stuff twice.
Is this a one-time thing? It's an experiment then or will...
Yeah.
Okay, okay. And that might be possible for the businesses that are concerned, that we say we're going to do this and evaluate.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And there's so much to think about too. What if the weather is bad? You know, we won't necessarily have a lot of data.
It could rain out.
Yeah.
Mayor here.
Ms. Molson?
Okay, so to clarify, is our current thought to do Friday night from five P.M. to ten P.M. the first time around?
Mayor here.
Oh, I think, go ahead, Mr. Miller, or is it Mr. Walters?
Mr. Walters.
Oh, Mr. Walters.
Mr. Meesmer's suggestion and the one that I support is from five P.M. Saturday to ten P.M., five P.M. Friday to ten P.M. Saturday.
Okay, so the whole kit and kamutal, the whole...
Yeah, we do it one time and see how it works.
Okay, great. I support that idea.
Hey, Bruce, those Anthony, Lainey and Matt, do you support that?
Mayor here, that, yeah, I mean, reluctantly, the good news on that one is, is you'll get, you'll get good feedback, uh, of, of that Saturday morning, that Saturday time from nine, nine A.M. to five P.M. where the retailer, so, you know, there, there's value in that. It's just, I, I don't think the barricade thing, I've been to other cities where, you know, Friday night they pull a police car or an auxiliary patrol car in front of the street, put five barricades up and call it done. You know, it's, I, you know, I, I'm uncomfortable when we talk about F.T.E.s and, and, uh, this is such a big deal. But, but yes, write down all the, all the, all the time it takes to do this. Uh, but sure, I, I could get behind the, the twenty, what is that, twenty-six hours, twenty-eight hours of, of closure as opposed to the two five-hour blocks, sure, to try it out. I could be behind that.
Okay, I, Don, I think, did you hear what our march order orders are?
Y- yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. All right, well, we'll have a plan for you and, um, we've got two weeks. We can do this, no problem.
Mayor here.
Yes, Mr. Walters?
If all we do is close the street, we will not have done anything useful.
Oh, I get that.
Okay, uh, I, I do not want us to be laser-focused on closing the street for eighteen hours and, and miss the larger point, which is the businesses have got to be out there. We have to do marketing and not ads in the Seattle Times, but, you know, tell the community what we're doing, um, and get people to come out and get people to support that effort. The reason I suggest that we need staff is because I, I seem to keep getting the impression from Mr. Meesmer that it's just him, uh...
It is.
And his pickup truck that might be putting out these barricades. I, we, we need support from other staff and I assume you, the mayor, will be instructing other departments for this?
Yes, well, we'll do that. We'll do that. We'll work on that. Mr. Meesmer?
I wanted to mention, Mayor, that, um, the mayor and I will be talking to, um, every business on the central business district in the next few days. We have purchased two hundred and fifty boxes of fifty masks each that we'll be distributing to the businesses.
And we can talk to them about both at the same time. We're going to do a walkabout.
Yes.
Yeah, um, but I hear you, Mr. Walters. We, if, without the businesses' participation, we have nothing. So...
So, we'll gauge that.
Yeah.
Well, Mayor here, sorry, one, one last point.
No, it's all good, it's all good.
Uh, it, well, it, it is all about the business participation. That's why, I mean, the street closure is what we can do as a city, but, you know, we can't go into the private restaurants with our city employees and, and load their chairs and tables out in the streets. We're doing this to give them an opportunity to do that, especially during COVID, to be able to expand their... They have to take the lead, Mr. Walters. I mean, I, you know, it's, it is up to them. We're, we're providing that opportunity for them. And that opportunity could be as simple as just closing the streets.
Okay, well, we'll be back, um, in a few days with a report how we're going to proceed. And, you know, that falls on, well, normally it would be shipwreck weekend, so we'll have something on the street. Something in mid-July, that would be nice. Um, which is typically one of the busiest restaurant days in Anacortes is shipwreck days, so... In the old day, old times, before COVID. Okay, anything else? All right, then we're going to move on to item four B, which is a letter of intent for the hyper hydrothermal processing system to treat wastewater biosolids. This is a contract mod, no, wait, no, excuse me. It's just a letter of intent. So, Mr. Buckamire, you are here to present.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
You're welcome.
So, I've got, um, a presentation here, not a PowerPoint, just speaking, I think I've got seven, seven topics I'm going to cover. So, it's quite a bit of detail here. First of all, I'm going to start off by saying that staff is, um, uh, pretty, pretty excited about this opportunity. And we've talked about it several times at the Public Works Committee, uh, the mayor, you and I have talked about it several times. Um, Ms. Swettman, our city attorney, has looked at the letter of intent and, um, she says it doesn't obligate us to anything that we can't get out of at a later date. Becky Fox and I and her staff have investigated the process and the system to the extent where we are recommending we proceed with a feasibility study to determine if this, if this system meets our future needs. So, the request tonight is to authorize the mayor to sign this letter of intent, which will allow us to begin a very formal feasibility study, which could take, you know, a year or more to get to the end of that. The letter of intent puts us first in line to acquire this system and I'll get into why that's important a little bit later. Doesn't obligate us to purchase the system, even though there's kind of pricing in there, if you will, cost estimates in there, if you will, but it doesn't obligate us to purchase it. But it, like I said, it does allow us to begin a, a, a lengthy study process to see if this is the system that we want to purchase. Okay, so number one, I always start off with what's the problem we're trying to solve? So, the problem we're trying to solve is the replacement of our aging, uh, more than twenty-year-old solid waste incinerator. As councils are aware, we have a wastewater sludge incinerator at our wastewater plant that processes. It burns our wastewater sludge into ash. It's one of five in the state of Washington. Um, it's got extremely high, and I'm going to not use that word lightly, extremely high maintenance and repair costs. Um, it's highly regulated by the, um, EPA and by Northwest Clean Air Authority. And it has the same, um, national air quality regulations as solid waste garbage incinerators. So, it's, it's very highly regulated. It's got extremely stringent mercury limits, so we can't, we can't, um, exhaust, you know, only the, the slightest of mercury. It's got expensive source testing every year. We go through an annual shutdown every year, a week-long shutdown for, uh, maintenance and repairs. There's a lot of staff overtime involved in that materials. We typically don't know what the extent of the repairs are going to be until we shut the incinerator down, cool it off and open it up and then discover all the, what's all, what's all wrong with it. It's usually the heat exchanger, um, the, the tube sheets, refractory material that need repair and those are all specialty welding and custom parts made to order. So, that's number one. Problem is, number two, the potential solution. We realized several years ago that we were going to have to eventually do something to our heat exchanger. Um, it was either going to take an extensive rebuild or a replacement with an alternative system. Um, we speculated at that point that the technology would not be here for, uh, several more years in the future, um, and really didn't know when. But recently we were approached by Genifuel as a company with a proposal to acquire one of their systems. Um, this is a tested and proven technology. They've been, it's been in place a long time. They've been actually processing sludge with it since two thousand seventeen. The closest, um, user of the system currently is, uh, Vancouver, Canada. There's a city in Vancouver. Um, but there's an entity in California, a large entity, that is converting to this Genifuel hydrothermic liquef- liquefaction technology for their biosolid needs, much, much bigger than, than Anacortes. So, Genifuel's building to them a fully functional but smaller system, so that they can use that during their pilot study. But after the pilot study's done, they're going to acquire a much larger system, magnitude probably ten times this, that size of a, a much, much larger system. And they're no longer going to need this smaller, this smaller unit. But the smaller unit is quite well-suited and sized for Anacortes. It just, it, it's really targets us very, really well. Okay, so, now it's number three, brief explanation of the system. So, keep in mind there's a long ways to go before we are ready to make a recommendation on a purchase of this thing. We're just trying to enter this with an open mind. But the simple explanation is you put sludge, solid waste sludge in this thing, you pressure cook it, it produces bio crude and a gas mixture, and then you can sell the crude and you can sell the gas. Simple as it comes. Um, the, the process operates at a much lower temperature than our incinerator and therefore it's not subject to any of the air pollution regulations. And it also fits nicely into the acco- in Department of Ecology's goal, uh, for the beneficial use of biosolids, which, which we don't do. We just turn them into ash. And because this thing takes those biosolids and produces a crude oil that can be refined into gasoline or whatever afterwards. And, um, through the use of this hydrothermic, uh, process, it, it basically sends our sludge through a process that's very similar to what, how fossil fuels were, were created over millions of years, but it does it in thirty minutes. So, it's really, really handy.
Wow.
So, step four, what are the steps, number four here? So, right now, this smaller pilot unit is being constructed and being, by the end of the year, it will be in operation in Cali- at the California site. It's going to be in operation there for about thirty months, okay? And then at the end of that time, um, they're, they would refurbish this thing, take out all the parts that got wore out and ship it to Anacortes. That would be sometime in the end of twenty twenty-three, so, a couple of... That would be sometime in the end of 2023, so, a couple of years from now. The cost estimate to, for this thing is about five to six million. Um, there's a possibility of, of tapping into something called the Washington State Revolving Fund, which could reduce the cost to four million. We don't really know much about that, but the feasibility study will help us work out the details of how that would work. Um, just a side note here, Becky and I were thinking, if we, if we were gonna replace the incinerator, I don't know how mu- I, I don't know how to do that, but we would be talking in, in terms of 20 to 30 million dollars to replace our incinerator. So, this thing is a, is a bargain at five to six million dollars. Okay, number five, so we took some time and compared this to the Omni processor, 'cause that's sort of a local, you know, local thing and, and, and arguably, it does sort of the same thing, but there are some very drastic, uh, differences. So, the, the Omni processor, um, uses, produces electricity and drinking water from the sewage sludge feedstock, okay? So, it requires, um, a large de-watering effort, you have, that sludge has to be very dry in order for that to work. And then basically what it does is it burns it, like we do now with our incinerator, and that generates steam, and that steam is used to power a steam engine, which then produces electricity. But being an incineration process, the Omni processor is going to be subject to all the air regulations that we are currently subject to, okay? And there's all, there's many hurdles that we would have to jump through to make, to get that, to get that approved. One of the biggest hurdles is that, um, we would have to start from scratch to be able to comply with air regulations for a sewage sludge incinerator. Um, because we are grandfathered in under our old one, we, we get some, you know, there's some consideration because of that, because we've had it there for so many years. But we would have to go through an extensive air pollution control, um, equipment, you know, certification by the Department of Ecology. We'd have to meet emission standards and, um, for, they're far more stringent than, than the ones we are currently meeting. Um, and then you're gonna have testing and monitoring, you know, throughout the process also. But because this, this system operates at a much lower temperature, it's just pressure, um, we get by without any, with very reduced set of regulations on it. There's the air, the air emissions are, are nothing compared to what they are with the one we have. Okay, number six, so, um, we spent some time talking to a local resident, um, some of you might know him, Tom, Tom Jackson. He was, uh, heavily or instrumental, I think, in, in the Omni processor, um, unit technology. Um, so he said, hey, you know, hey, Tom, can you help us out? Guy was very eager to do that. Um, and I said, can you help us compare, compare the two? And, uh, in the short of it is, Tom is very supportive of the city proceeding with the exploration of this Genafuel hydrothermic process. Um, he said, are, this application, the, the, this thing has distinct advantages over the Omni processor. Um, and much of those I just, I just went through. He's also generously expressed an interest in helping us as we move through, um, the next phase. He said, hey, if you want somebody to be a second set of eyes on this thing as you're moving through, um, he'd be happy to do that. And I immediately argued for about 30 seconds and I took him up on it. Yeah. Um, let's see, that, that's the sixth thing. The seventh thing was just gonna be to try to answer some of the questions that, that, um, came out of the Public Works Committee, or Carolyn, I think you did them, like, is that still appropriate this time? Should I go to answer those now?
Oh, sure, that'd be great, thanks, Brad.
Yep, so some of the, the questions Carolyn would ask us, so, um, what is our current percentage of solids? So, right now, we have 3% to 5% solids going into our de-watering system, and when it comes out of the de-watering system, it's 18% to 30% solids. And there was a question about would this, um, would this handle the big rains, the big rainstorms, the big rain events, like the Super Bowl Sunday rain event? And it's really, um, it's really apples and, and oranges, the, that's not, this is, this handles the sludge that comes out of the plant, not, not the, not the water, not, you know, so there's still a volume process that we have to go through with the big rain events. But the sludge that's pulled out would then be handled by, by this process. Um, and there was other questions about the, um, about the, um, revolving fund loan, and really those are, um, something we, we're gonna have to just work through as we, as we get through the process. That's part of what that feasibility study, um, would, would help us with. So, that was my seventh questions. I went fast.
Mayor here? Mayor here?
Yeah, Mr. Walters.
Brad, who do you expect or propose will do the feasibility study?
Yeah, I haven't gotten that far yet, uh, Council Walters, it, not knowing if we were gonna get a, you know, a, a head nod or a, or a, you know, positive vote here, uh, once we, once we get to that, we'll work with the Brown and Caldwell folks who are the engineering guys that are putting this together, maybe they can recommend some firms that have done those before and can help us out.
Yeah, I noticed their logo on the materials. What is their role right now in this?
Yeah, so they work for Genafuel, okay? And they, they, they kinda engineer these systems and help, and, and help build them and design them.
Ah, okay, so, I guess what I'd be looking for, I mean, I, 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 I think the letter of intent itself is rather innocuous and the technology as described sounds pretty good. Um, and I, and I take the point that the Omni processor is, is really not appropriate for our needs. But, um, I would be looking for some kind of third-party independent feasibility study, not done by the engineer or the company that is trying to sell the thing.
Right. I mean, I was hoping they could make, might be able to recommend somebody that's done those, those type of things before, so, but, yeah, you're right.
Mr. Jackson recommend somebody?
That's, that's another avenue, that's absolutely, yeah, we could do that also, yeah.
Yeah, I just, I, that, and I wa- I want the scope of the feasibility study to be, is this technology feasible for us and is this the best technology for us? Because if there's something else out there that's cheaper or more expensive and better for us, let's go after that than, than this. But otherwise, I'm supportive of moving forward with investigating this.
Thank you.
Mayor here?
Mr. McDougal.
A couple of quick questions. Brad, the, the Omni processor, is that actually, is that a net energy producer or, or because we're having to burn the, the materials, it's actually a net energy loss? Like, we're spending more on energy than we're recouping in the electricity that comes out of the process?
Um, for us, you know, I don't know if I can answer that question. I know for us, the, the, what we'd be doing is taking out that second process, okay? We'd be producing the oil and the gas and selling it to another entity that, that, that they could use to produce, to produce the energy.
Sorry, sorry, I was asking about the Omni processor, just to, as a contrast.
Yeah, and, and they do that the opposite, right? So, that's, that's a smaller unit that they just, they just process it all in one, and I don't know if, I don't know if that is a neg- I, to be honest with you, I don't know if, if the Omni processor is negative or positive energy. I don't have...
Meesmer?
Yeah.
Could I, could I, I'd just like to interject, 'cause I did have a conversation with, um, Mr. Jackson as well, and my understanding of it is that it takes energy to get the Omni processor going, but once you get it started up, it runs on its own energy that creates it's a closed system, and then it produces energy beyond the needs of the system itself.
Okay, so it's probably, maybe it's a wash.
And it produces clean drinking water also, correct?
Right, so it produces electricity and it, it, it produces excess electricity and clean drinking water.
And then the, the system that we're feasibility studying, or at least kind of, um, proposed to, to look into, its, its only outputs are essentially crude oil and some, some other, uh, natural gas or, or is there other outputs from its stream?
So, it's, uh, from my understanding, it's crude oil, methane, gas, and, and water comes out of it.
Yeah. Crude oil, methane, gas, and water.
Mayor here?
Yes, Mr. Miller.
Yeah, I, I certainly support a feasibility study, although I'm always worried when Mr. Buckamire throws around some, some numbers, uh, the, the five and six million, uh, to replace the incinerator. Part of that feasibility study, I think, needs to, needs to include, okay, you know, oh, our, our incinerator's really old, well, what does that mean? You know, it's 20 years old, that doesn't mean it couldn't necessarily run for another six years. 'Cause all the reports I see from your great wastewater treatment folks is we pass all the clean air stuff with flying colors, EPA, you know, so it's a good, yeah, it's, it's not the greatest technology, but it, it's a very good system. So, part of that feasibility study, you know, it, what's the upgrade of that over the next 20 years? What's that cost? And, and what's the impact of the repairs? Should we go this other relatively unproven technology at this point? Because there's all sorts, all sorts of stuff with the Omni processor that, you know, we shouldn't probably talk about, you know, you know, just because there's a lot of other unique aspects of that. This is not an Omni processor from what little you've, you've told us here tonight. But again, I, I support this, you know, looking into this, but I, I would really like a cost, a, a, uh, life cycle cost of our current system versus, versus going this way.
Yeah, return on investment, life cycle cost, that whole thing, it's not just, does this work?
And, and is our current system fine? I mean, throwing out things like, well, mercury, yeah, mercury's always an issue, but we do a really good job of, of controlling it with our current system. And are there technologies that only cost $500,000 next three, three years from now that keeps us making that? So, I, it's, you know, let's do a little cost analysis, too. Thanks.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor here?
Yes, Mr. Young.
Uh, I, I wanna echo the sentiment of, you know, Council, I think we've had some great questions, great, uh, input into this process. I like it, I think that the, um, in, the letter of intent doesn't bind us, but what it really does, it gives us an opportunity to continue to do our due diligence to figure out whether or not this is something that the cost-benefit analysis that we will also do, um, performs in, to the city's benefit. And so, I think I'm in support of it, I really am. I do think, though, that, you know, when it comes down to, uh, other methodologies of meeting this need for the city, that we look at the Omni processors as well, I think that may come out with the feasibility study, but just taking a look and seeing what our options are. We've got 18 months, I think it doesn't hurt us to move forward for consideration of, and explore it. I think it's a need that needs to be met, and then at any time, according to Ms., uh, Swetman, uh, it doesn't bind us to make this purchase, but it does give us an opportunity to do the analysis we need and see if it meets our need, not only financially, but the product, um, produces something that's very usable for us. So, I, I'm very much in support of, um, moving forward with the letter of intent for the, um, processing. Thank you.
Was that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Hey.
A second.
We have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. McDougal, to approve the letter of intent being sent forward on the hydrothermal processing system to treat wastewater biosolids. Um, because this was a consent item, I will take the vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say aye. Motion carries. Go forth, Mr. Buckamire, and explore our options.
Thank you, thank you.
Alright. Is there anything else for the good of the order this evening? Great meeting, great conversation, um, we'll see you all next week. At this time, the meeting is adjourned.